Okay, good evening. I would like to call the Board Budget Work Session to order all Board members are present. I would please like, I would like to ask Dr. Marslaf, would you please lead us in reciting the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency X's evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn off their cell phones and any other electronic devices to silent, please and thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Dr. Lucino, second. Mr. Schubert, your discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Dr. Marslaf, would you like to make the 2017-18 budget presentation, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Vasquez. Myself and Mr. Maturski will be sharing some information about the budget, where we are in the planning process, and answer any questions or take any feedback from Board members as well as the community and have a discussion with them as well. This year, I wanted to start off with looking at some of our demographics as a school district. Number one, we are below 10,000 students this year, 9,972 students, 14 schools, including six elementary, four middle, three high school, and one alternative education program, our AIM program. Our graduation rate for 2016 was up to 94 percent. We have about 11 percent of our students receiving special education services, and 3.3 percent of our students are English language learners, and 16.4 percent participate in free and reduced lunch programs. And what does that look like over the last five years? While our enrollment has decreased 3 percent across the district, at the same time, number of students we have living in poverty has increased by 36.3 percent, or about 6 percent plus per year. So certainly, this is introducing some new challenges as a school district. At the same time, we've also had an almost 60 percent increase in our number of English language learners. Part of that is due to the changing regulations within New York State in who is serviced as an English language learner, and part of that is new English language learner students that are moving into our community from other countries. So in looking at our budget, we want to make sure we're supporting our quality educational program in accordance with our multi-year strategy. Comply with all New York State tax cap requirements is always a goal of our budgeting process, and prioritize our instructional needs, of course, to drive our resources to the classroom. Our preliminary budget that we presented a couple of weeks ago maintains all of our current level of academic and extracurricular programming, and also includes nearly $1.4 million in salary expense reductions, and does, of course, adhere to this New York State tax cap. It also supports programs such as Link Crew and the Where Everyone Belongs program, sources of strength in our elementary school resource programs, funds new summer school program for high school students with special needs, and adds a full-time special education teacher for a new high school class, a 15-to-one class. This was accomplished through budget reallocations and a reduction in BOSI services. Some future considerations that we've talked about throughout the budget process that are not currently part of the preliminary budget include instructional coaching positions for teachers, English as a new language, teacher on special assignment at one FTE, float nurses at two FTEs, additional part-time physical therapists and speech pathologists, implementing languages other than English program at the elementary level, the potential for adding a school resource officer for the district, or multiple school resource officers for certain schools or all schools throughout the district, our pilot program for school bus monitors, and in addition, class size reductions, which we are in the process of currently reviewing for potential inclusion in the 2017-18 budget development process. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski at this time, and he can talk to you about some of our revenues and expenses. Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Marslaf. I want to begin by reviewing the tax cap calculation. As Dr. Marslaf indicated, we are under the tax cap, and this is the formula we use. It starts with our current 2016 school tax levy, which is $117,227,512. We multiply that by the growth factor that is provided to us by New York State, or 1.22 percent. We, that multiplies out, and we reduce or add to that our pilot payments received for this current year, multiply that by our CPI increase, another number provided to us by New York State, a 1.26 percent increase, and that gives us a subtotal of almost $123.5 million. The formula requires us to remove our projected pilot payments for the next year, 1718, which we do, and once that is done, it provides us with our tax cap limit, which is $120,253,851, and that's an increase of a little over $3 million, and we do have $100,000 carryover that is allowed by the New York State Comptroller's Office to be added to that. So our limit for the current year, and this is the amount that has been accepted by the Comptroller's Office, is $3,126,339 of an increase, or a levy limit itself of $120,353,851, which is the 2.67 percent number. Estimated revenue summary for 1718. Again, this year, the state aid picture is not looking certainly as nice as it did last year, when we received a nice increase from the state, when we consider some items that are occurring in, as far as the reduction of our aid ratios due to an increase in what the state considers our district wealth, and some other items that are not going to be continuing for reimbursement this year, which include a reduction in bus aid due to bus purchases from five years ago being fully aided, as well as a reduction in some of the building aid areas where, again, the same thing is occurring, where projects are fully aided. That total aid is $174,884 decrease, and $125,000 increase in sales tax. Other revenues are up by about $44,000, and then the levy amount, which you saw in the tax cap slide of $3,125,488, provides us a total revenue increase of $3,119,604. All right. So now we're on the program continuation expenses, and this is the major expenses that are provided in our budget that is proposed. $3,598,861 for employee salaries, social security increase of $100,000, health insurance of little over $400,000, student services up by $100,000, debt service by $100,000, and also student transportation is up for $200,000. That amount represents contractual increases. Expense reductions to date, our salary savings in retirements of $1,347,010, and based upon those retirements, we are projecting a decrease in our need for a social security or FICA increase of $50,000. So that represents a little under $1.4 million. Estimated revenues, then, are $3,119,604, as you saw, program continuation expenses of So that shortfall of $1,397,010 is met by the reductions you saw on the prior page. So looking at how the budget looks on the revenue side, this is showing what the 1718 percentages would look like, about 22 percent on state aid, and the other major is our tax levy of 64.67 percent. Small increases in those other areas, but you can see that those two increases are just about 86 percent of our budget. So looking at it graphically, again, you can see how the property tax levy and the state aid are a significant portion of our budget. Also here, you see the appropriated fund balance that's added in, as well as the appropriated So on the expenditure budget, again, the general support services is the administration side of the budget. It's about 11 percent, a little over $20.5 million. Instruction is our largest amount, as it should be. That represents regular instruction and special education. It includes occupational education, and all the athletics and the other support areas. That represents 57.94 percent. Transportation is a little under $9 million, 4.81 percent. Other category represents the censuses that is taken periodically by the district, just $19,000, and our benefits represent 20.15 percent, with debt equaling 6.07 percent, and that equals the total $186,135,210. Again, graphically, you can see the two major items in this pie chart. Instruction, 57.94 percent, and employee benefits at 20.15 percent.
The way this looks from a tax rate and levy change, we're estimating a tax rate increase of 1.42 percent. With the tax levy increases, Mr. Maturski mentioned, of 2.67 percent, and a budget-to-budget increase of 1.7 percent. It's important to realize that this is based on the 91 percent equalization rate in the town of Amherst, and the number of people have already received their new assessments. So I'll talk about that more in a moment. Our tax levy is at or below the cap and has been ever since the tax cap was implemented into New York State law in June of 2011, and so we've had a slow, small, steady increase. When it comes to assessments, how do they impact your school taxes? Certainly, a town of Amherst is 89 percent of our district tax base, and the last townwide reassessment was conducted in 2009, and we're returning to full value from 91 percent, and those are being finalized by July. The school tax rate can only be estimated until assessment rolls are set, and that's what happens every single year. We set our tax rate at our August board meeting on an annual basis, and the actual increase or decrease depends on the change in the property's assessed value as determined by the town. They do all that, and we do not have input into that. So the school tax rate is likely to be lower, might be lower by 1 percent, 2 percent. I don't think it might, I don't think it should reach 3 percent, but at any rate, it will decrease somewhat, and that's because the total assessed value has increased. There is, however, no impact on the tax levy, and the way to think about this is the tax levy is the pie, and the tax rate impacts how the pie is divided up, and your assessed values determine how it's divided up. So what we're seeing with the reassessment is a change in how that pie is divided up amongst all of our property owners with our approximately $6 billion worth of property in the Williamsville Central School District. The assessments do not result in any additional revenue to the school district, which was spoken to in a recent article in the Buffalo News. The New York State tax cap law controls the increase to the tax levy. Years ago, you'd see a switching between the rate and the levy. Now we have to focus only on the levy as a school district, which is a 2.67 percent increase. And the school district has no input into the town's reassessment program. We're not allowed to do that. Our total estimated 2017-18 budget at this time is $186,135,210. Again, a budget-to-budget increase of only 1.7 percent, an estimated tax levy increase of 2.67 percent, which is below the New York State tax cap, and an estimated tax rate increase right now of 1.42 percent. So just a little bit of information on contingent budgets. Under state law, school boards can submit a budget to voters for a maximum of two times. If the proposed budget is defeated twice, the board must adopt a contingent budget with a 0 percent tax levy increase. This would cause us to have a contingent budget of $183,015,606, or put another way, we would have to reduce the budget by $3,119,604, and a number of programs and opportunities would be at risk if that were to happen. Our budget development timeline continues on this evening with our public forum. April 4th, I'll be presenting final changes to the budget for the board to vote on adopting the budget for 2017-18, and then on May 4th is our annual budget hearing, where we do a presentation right before Meet the Candidates night, and then May 16th is the annual district vote and Board of Education election. Questions, comments, concerns from the board?
Thank you, Dr. Marslaf. I just have, first of all, this great presentation, as always, but I have one question, and I think it was on the seventh slide. Future considerations lists some items that might be considered once the revenue budget is finalized. Do we have any idea when that revenue budget will be finalized, and when we might consider these additional items?
The revenue budget should be finalized right around April 1st. The governor has a string of on-time budgets that have taken place at the state level, and talking with our legislators, they anticipate the budget will either be on time or perhaps 24 to 48 hours late, and at that time, we will know our final state aid numbers for next year to complete the budget. However, I do want to point out that the amount of funds that we may receive from the state in the final state aid allocation may not be significant enough to consider these items for next year. It might be most prudent to wait and be conservative.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Just for educational purposes, if the budget was defeated twice, and we do need to cut $3.2 million roughly, what are the top few items that we can share with our PTA units and the public that could be at risk if the budget was cut or defeated twice?
Well, I think it would certainly impact class size all across the district. I think it would, it would-
Teachers would lose their positions? We'd lose teachers, or-
I'm sorry?
Is that because of personnel costs would be? We'd lay off additional teachers, or?
Yeah, well, we have a number of retirements this year, so I don't know if it would result in layoffs or not. We don't know if this current preliminary budget will result in layoffs or not. It depends on the areas of where the reductions come in at. However, when it comes to class sizes, yes, we would have to expand those, and you'd use less personnel. We would look at everything across the district, as we have in the past, when we've been up against it with some really difficult budgets in past years. We'd look at our BOSI's budget, we'd look at reducing that, we'd look at reducing potential programming for students, we might have to look at fifth grade foreign language as something to be reduced from the budget, we might have to look at summer school as a reduction or limited summer school program. You know, the list goes on and on, and I would say with over $3 million, you wouldn't want to leave any stone unturned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Lucino?
And just, again, thank you for this presentation, always. It's always enlightening. The other thing is, we don't even know about mandates yet, as far as anything that comes down as a mandate from-
You mean new mandates?
Mandates.
You really never know when you might have new mandates. I don't anticipate anything on the immediate horizon. I'm more concerned with the potential loss of federal revenue based on the president's proposed budget, which could decrease our federal aid, which, as you know, is a little over $4 million in revenue for our district, and that would come at a time where we wouldn't know it. So for example, it might come in the fall or into the next winter, and be, and impact us for during next year's budget from a revenue standpoint, which is one of the reasons trying to remain as conservative as possible if we do get more state aid.
Yes, Mr. Mecca.
Just a few questions. I noticed that some of the budget reductions came from less spending on BOSI's services. Can someone speak to why we have less of a need for BOSI services?
Well, there's certain, we look at our BOSI's budget very carefully every year. Mr. Maturski organizes a meeting amongst assistant superintendents and officials from BOSI's to look at various aspects. Some of the things are items that we've brought back to the district to do ourselves, for example, involved in our reading recovery program, which you might recall in last year's budget process. Other ones are different technology that's provided by BOSI's that we no longer need to use. We might, for example, purchase fewer devices, computers, printers, projectors, whatever the case may be there. So there's also special education classes that we've reduced in the past from BOSI's and provided the services right here with our own folks. So different items like that that have had a positive impact on our budget.
Okay, sorry, sorry to ask a question that maybe we don't know the exact answer to, but just in terms of number of students that are accessing services at BOSI's, do we have a rough estimate of what that is?
When you say accessing services at BOSI's, that's a, that's a-
No.
Big, broad, if you want to say, like, for example, career and technical education programs, there's-
Okay, yeah.
Probably 150 students between the three high schools that access career and technical education programs on a half-day basis.
I believe that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, you're welcome.
May I ask another?
Sure.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I see that we're having a summer program for students who receive special education services. Would that be like extended school year services? Okay, thanks. One more follow-up, if it's possible, or not a follow-up, but one more question, or should I?
I think he's, I think he's used all his, Mrs. Vasquez, but it's up to you, you're the president.
Don't stop people from talking at the table, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just so I have a better understanding, I'm going to look to Mr. Maturski, because I'm sure he knows the answer to this question better than anybody else, I suppose. Pilot payments, are they made to us from New York State?
No, our pilot payments are actually coming from two sources. It's right from the property or the, not necessarily, the property owners who have the agreements, and some of them are passed through the Amherst Industrial Development Agency. They receive the payments and pass them on to us. So they're actually billed, most of them, I'd say about 90 percent are billed by our business office right to the address of the property owner.
Okay, so then, just, I guess I didn't understand pilots that well, so if I can ask a follow-up on that. So let's say we have a piece of property that's owned by a church, for example, clearly exempt from the tax rolls. Do, do, does that church make a pilot payment of some sort, or does every property that's-
No, no, the pilot payment program is really, they have to go through usually an industrial development agency, and so what occurs is there's, there's really, in our area, there's either the Amherst Industrial Development Agency or Erie County. So two examples, two good examples of a pilot program payment would be the Geico Building in Cross Point. That's an Erie County Industrial Development Agency pilot program, and we do receive funds for that. Other buildings that receive pilot programs, there are some in that same Cross Point Park that are done through the Amherst Industrial Development. Those type of items that you're talking about, area churches, normally, they're completely exempt from tax, and that would not be in a pilot program. That's tax law, and that goes through the town.
Understood. So I guess then to summarize, a pilot program would be a way of incentivizing a business to come here to, to do business in our area, and they receive some sort of reduction in their payment, and then that's a pilot payment.
Correct. The payment, the programs vary based upon each particular pilot, but they usually are for a term of between 10 and 15 years, and it's a graduated payment process until they go back onto the tax rolls.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Lemay?
Thank you. Once again, great budget, great presentation, so thank you for putting the time and effort into this. Dr. Marslaf, you mentioned that federal aid that we're concerned about is roughly $4 million that comes into the district. On Slide 13, which is on Page 14 of our, or, excuse me, Page 7 of our packet, shows the revenue budget. I'm not seeing a breakdown here of where that federal money comes in. Where, where does that apply, or what category does that come under?
Mr. Maturski, you want to address that, please?
Certainly. The way the federal programs work is they are not part of our general fund. What you are seeing and what the community votes on is our general fund budget. Those federal aid dollars that come in are specifically targeted for programs that we have to, on an annual basis, Dr. Siri and Dr. Baylen submit applications through New York State, and they have to be approved by the state. That's a pass-through funds that come from the federal government to the state, and it is not used to supplant our dollars. Technically, it's used to supplement. However, many of the services that have, are being provided are services that we have found to be extremely important to the school district and to those students in the programs. So if the federal dollars were reduced to any level, it's likely that as a school district, we would want to pick those expenditures up for those programs and to provide that to those students. So you're not seeing it as part of this physical budget, but it would be a separate item, so you could actually have another pie that would be right next to it, a small one, that's kind, that would be circling the big budget, because that's really how it works.
Yes, Mr. Lemay?
Follow-up on that, then. Can we get an idea of what would be impacted if we lost that $4 million in funding? I'd kind of take the Mr. Smith approach here to, what's the worst case?
Yeah, we can get you a list, but as Mr. Maturski mentioned, it would be impacting different things across the district, because the last thing you want to do is take away funding for programs for your most vulnerable students-
Of course not.
-which is what it would do. So, I mean, we'd be happy to provide the board with that list, but at the same time, that's not what I would be recommending, or our group would be recommending to take out of the budget.
Oh, I don't think we're ever looking to try and take that out of the budget, for sure. I'm just curious as to what that impact would be. I mean, I don't know that we need a formal list, maybe just more of a hypothetical, you know, what, what kind of services would we lose if we lost that $4 million?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes, Mr. Schubert?
I'm sorry to say, I'm, I think I kind of follow, but I don't. The $1,086,000 does or does not include the $4 million. I think from what you're, from what you're saying, I kind of hear it doesn't.
Does not.
So there are, as we've heard, just other specific services that those, that money is used for. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mecca?
Does some of the federal money pass through as state money?
That I'll receive from New York State. It's all received from New York State, so it's all passed through.
So follow-up to that, does that appear under, does some of that revenue appear under the state aid?
No.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Would someone in the audience, would anyone, I'm sorry, would anyone in the audience like to address the board about the budget? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. No one? Once, twice, no? Okay. Mrs. Seraphin, have any board candidate petitions been returned for this year's election?
We have one petition returned, so we have one legitimate candidate. That would be Dr. Susan D. McClary has submitted her petition. Dr. McClary is in the audience, if you'd like to stand, so board members know who you are.
Hello?
And some background honors, she is a retired sweet home teacher. She worked at Damon College, and currently, she is Barry Weinstein's assistant.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, just as a reminder, the board retreat is this coming Saturday at eight AM. All members, please don't leave tonight without getting a packet from Mrs. Seraphin, please. She has something for you, please make sure you get it before you go. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April fourth, at seven PM in this boardroom. Okay? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the budget work session and public forum meeting? Mrs. Lathrell, second, Mr. Lemay? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Good night, thank you.